Hello everyone! Yo, let me just put on something warm, because it's fucking cold. You can't man you? No, I'm not even kidding! I'm freezing! I am freezing! Okay, so, hi Lucen, hi Demon, hi Author, and hi Hades, welcome in! How are you guys? Hope you're doing good! You're doing good! Ooh, I don't know why I'm freezing at that? Oh, hi Pegasus, welcome in! How are you? So close down to the 30 second slide! I think the battle of getting the first... I think it's kind of fun, no work to do, figure it out. Aw, that's so nice, Ousmane! That's so nice! Hey Cutie, hi Cutie! Hi! Also freezing. Yeah, I got my blanket on too. I got a t-shirt, I got a really thick shirt, and then I got my blankie. And hi Hit, how are you? How you doing? My nose is also runny. I got myself a nice little cappuccino, nice and hot. How are you doing? I'm doing pretty good! I don't know what's going on, but I feel a headache like 24/7, so I don't know. Okay, can I go? Oh shit, I forgot, I'm sorry! Oh my gosh, I completely forgot about the "how to get girls"! Okay, now it should be, now it should be... "How to learn how to get girls?" Well, then you have to watch the VOD on YouTube. The end of the stream we did a "how to get girls". You may also ask at the end of this stream, "how to get girls?" Yeah, we're gonna do study. I posted the schedule in Discord. I didn't post it to Twitter. I don't know why I always forget Twitter! I don't know! I don't know. Where did you learn "overgaming"? Well, Taoro and Arusha learnt a lot about getting girls, because then also... Oh my gosh, I love this little ducky! It's adorable! Oops, I was looking at the wrong schedule. Oh yeah, I don't remove the other one, I just keep the new one. The class was good, but I was too interested in... We learned, guys. I taught you guys: Always keep some snacks in your pocket. No touchy-touchy on the first date. You may hold hands, but that's it. That's it. What else? What else did we learn? I'm wondering how to get the teacher. Well... Hades with the... Get everything. Of course, of course! Of course! What is that sound? That's a really weird sound. I don't know where it's coming from. Probably from a neighbor, but still... Yeah, I would have a little girl's ostrich. You always, for the girls, always have a snack in your pocket. Pegasus can confirm. Pegasus can confirm. Once you have a snack in your pocket, it's way easier to get girls, right Pegasus? It's just easy, just easy! Not the chocolate. Maybe not chocolate, maybe not chocolate, maybe some gummy bears or... Yeah, that's very important: Pick the correct snacks. What the fuck is going on? I feel like my neighbors are especially loud today. My mom told me never take food or candy from strangers. Well, in that case, it would be on your first date, so you're not strangers strangers anymore. Also, very important: First dates are in a public place. Like a restaurant, or a park, or something. Those strangers. I mean... You don't have to take the snack from the other person, but you should be prepared and always have one in your pocket. Mom coming back. Yeah, you guys don't hear anything. I'm like, I'm sitting here like... Where's the sound coming from? Where is it coming from? I am not too relevant, but I managed to breathe to shine. What do you mean "not too relevant"? I'm sorry, but that's an EV, and it's shiny. This is very relevant, okay? That is very... What are you gonna, what is it? What EV lotion are you gonna pick for it? Yeah, trying to get a shiny Umbreon. Yeah, what EV lotion are you picking? Wait, it was, yeah. And you have to do yours. I mean, they would be very nice. By the way, I uploaded a new clip to TikTok if anybody wanna watch. It's a short one, but I uploaded it, and then beat up, then beat... We will see, we will see. I wanted to write some, oh, yeah, now I know. I do not even know how to use Tik... What? Lefion is a decent EV lotion, even though I don't really like them. Lefion doesn't really change in the shiny version, does it? It's like just a tiny bit different colored? And I think Author also doesn't really use TikTok, which is, it baffles me. Never had it. Hit? Also loves it! Wow, it could evolve on all the form up. I use it. Why is nobody using TikTok? Wow! The memory play is too slow for my liking. Now we'll have it. I think I was brain rot. It is, it is, it is brain rot. TikTok is gross. TikTok is not gross. That's where you can see the difference between you guys and me. My brain is broken, because I'm on TikTok, and your brain is just a tiny bit broken, because you're not on TikTok. It is, it is broken though, just a tiny bit. Just tiny bit. Yeah, I spend around 4 hours daily on TikTok. I would say around 4 hours. I tried to cut back, but... I like Instagram Reels, I'm sorry Hit, but... Excuse me. So you now, you just found out about the TikTok ban in the USA? What is the latest news on Instagram Reels? I wanna know what time difference is between those 2 apps. What? In terms of the words, sadly. Hi Taoro, welcome in! How are you? YouTube Shorts? YouTube Shorts? Wow! I mean, I do prefer YouTube Shorts over Instagram Reels, but there's, like, using, watching YouTube Shorts is a very tiny minority of the people in the world, I think. Because you have TikToks, and those TikToks cannot get reposted on Instagram at some time, and then after they had that time on Instagram, they're gonna get posted on YouTube Shorts. So you are very far behind on the trends. I'm doing pretty good too. I'm doing pretty good too. I don't know, I seem to love Pirate Software. I'm a boy. Oh yeah, yeah, Taoro is my son. Taoro is my son. How? How do you get the newest drama if you're not on TikTok? How? A lot of people hiding on Pirate Software. What's Pirate Software? Make my own drum. I love drama. Like I said yesterday, I love it. As long as I'm not involved, just watching on the sidelines, go for it. Make the biggest drama. I need to watch something, and Pegasus and I, we're gonna chat about it. Yeah. No, no, forget it. There's a sanctuary for ferrets. Oh my god, a sanctuary for ferrets! Oh my god, that's adorable! Yeah, Hit, what's going on? Hi! Hi! And then recent controversy was called cheating. My name is Parfum. Ooh, wieso ist dein Name Parfum? How dare you leave us, Hit! How dare you leave us? Don't forget to drink something. I don't know how it actually called the thing where you take an animal, nurse them, and then give... Yeah, I think it's a sanctuary, or is it a shelter? I don't know, but I know what you mean. I know what you mean, Demon. I know what you mean. Going to learn. Thank you for the lurk, Hit! Thank you for the lurk. Have fun, guys. Well, we try. My to-do list is pretty long today again, so... We try. Also streams. Hades is having a party. Look, guys. You should think that I just, where people can go to see and visit, not adopt? Yeah, that might be true. I think a sanctuary is where the animals live the rest of their lives peacefully, and a shelter is where you can adopt. I think that's how it is. Yeah, I have this emote for a pretty long time. I think I got it during my debut. I think it's new from the debut, but the debut is also a few months old. I have had that for a while now. Peacefully after being abused by the cruel and unforgiving world. My mom's goal is to have a sanctuary for animals. Mostly dogs, but that's her goal. She wants to have a sanctuary one day. But that's fucking expensive, so... I was still using this. I mean, we soon have a new mom... Oh guys, now that we are all here, let me drink something. Food cost, exactly. Also the location, like you need a big house, barn, property, whatever. Six pencil. Okay guys, we have a decision to make. We have a decision to make. I'm getting a new emote, and unless your sense is... It's on enclosed, because, yeah. At a ferret refuge. Oh, that's so, I love ferrets! They're so cute! Only so cute! Do you have the sniffles? I always have the sniffles. I have the sniffles for a few months now. How do I... How do I do that? We're gonna do this now. We're gonna have a shaft. We have this, this, this. I wanted to do this yesterday, but I forgot. I also wanted to do it on Discord. But then I forgot too. We're gonna do a few polls to get the idea of what you guys want. You have 1 minute to vote. Go, 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 go! Vote, 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 vote! Vote! I hope you guys are active right now. If you're up for an extra EV, yeah. This is, by the way, not the final vote. Just saying. We have a few more votes to go. We have a few more to go. I don't know if they eat snakes. I cannot speak on that, because we do not have snakes in Germany, but we have ferrets. So I don't know if they eat them. I think so, bugs. They eat insects mostly. Whole list of things. Yeah, Christine was here and helped as well. I'm choosing based on how often you... Yeah, let's go. Choose on how. I've discussed it. Got 2 votes. Oh shit, what? What's going on? Next one is... You get another minute! Go, 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 go! Guess we could use the discussion mode against... I mean, you could. You could. It looks like Riot is very... Popular. I'm gonna let you guys vote. We will see, we will see. And the winner is, of course, Riot. Next one... Oh, wait, no. We got... Let's go! Then we will no longer have Sages. That's why, that's why I did not put the option for jail emote. Because that was suggested as well, but I think we won't use the jail emote after the study streams really, so that's why I took it out. We've told the whole Discord that there's a poll stream. We could also Riot weren't to go leave. Yeah, exactly. Riot can be used more than just doing study streams. Did you vote already? Did you vote? I don't wanna sneak, I don't want to sneak peek. And... Soul Left body won. That's not, actually, I expected the Angi. I did expect the Angi. New poll... Is easier, because... It's only 2. Please ignore the name of the poll. They need a name, but I don't wanna, I don't wanna type something. So let's go. Let's go! And then we're gonna do a last and final poll, that will decide which one it's gonna be. I do that so often. I got so many files on my computer that I just... You know? That's just lips, right? That's the names of my files. It's, it's just the easiest. I don't do that with files, but things I don't need. Yeah, I mean, it depends. I also lurky, lurky. I also got, um, the files: New Folder, New Folder 2, New Folder 3, New Fo- I got those. So we got Disgusted and we got, um, Riot. And then we got Soul Left Body and we got the lurky lurk. Disgusted, right? Is that all? It's all. Okay, guys. We start now. I like the name of this poll. It's kinda pretty. I don't wanna sneak peek. Hard choice. It's a hard, it is, but the time is running out, guys. Time is running out. We're halfway through the time. Ooh, boy, wait, what? Did you betray him? I'm sorry, what? What won? Soul Left Body won! I did not expe- I expected Riot. I'm gonna be honest with you guys. I expected Riot. I expected Riot and the winner, the winner is Soul Left Body. I'm gonna... But don't worry. I still have a few, few slots left, so there might be some other ones I'm gonna do myself. Um... So yeah, don't worry. There might be a Riot emote one day. There might be a Riot emote. There might also be a Disgusted emote. You will never know. You can, it like, could be, could be. Let's begin my exorcism. Yeah, we decided, we decided now on the emote. It's good. So I can finally tell Nessa... Which one? Which one we won? Oh! Oh! Printling! Dante! What? Welcome in, Dante! How are you? Hi, Raiders! Welcome in! And how are you? Productive in this house? Welcome in, how are you? Welcome Raiders! I hope you had, you had a good stream.
Indeed.
Hope it was good! You just missed...
Oh, fuck me.
Uh, the, 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 the polls of the next emote. We're gonna have a new emote. So, yeah. You just missed it. And also, guys, go and ge- go, go, go and follow Dante. Follow him. This is a lo- Wait, it was la- Was it loud? Guys, was it too la- I'm sorry. I, I di- I didn't hear a thing. I didn't hear a thing! Yeah, we're getting a new emote and, um, and hi, Poxius, welcome in. How are you? We're doing good. And we choose the Soul Left the Body emote. Um, it was a close one between a Riot emote and a Disgusted emote as well. Wasn't it? Oh, old! Oh shit! You said old, I read loud! Um, I should get my glasses out of the kitchen, maybe. Maybe then I can read the chat properly. I'm sorry, I'm too stupid to read. We add any more to the li- We already decided on the one we get, but yes, you might, you might ca- you might add one. You may add one. Which one is it? I'm gonna write it down. Go for it, Demon. I got a fucking long list. I think of making songs. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm gonna make, I make my, I make myself. Chomping on. Like eating you like a snack or something? How, how do... Do you have an example of it? And, and want to send it to Discord really quick? Because I have no, no like, cat as a... I need, please, if you have an example of it, please send it to the showroom. I'm confused. I'm way too tired already. How can I be? How can I be that, like, I haven't even started my stream really? And I'm already tired. I hate it. I hate it very much. Evil. Done. Give me a second, give me a second. Oh! Yeah, okay, uh, we can, we can definitely add that to the list. I don't know. I don't know if we can, if I can do it. Um, or if we have to wait until I find an artist. But it's on the list. It's on the list. The list is long, by the way. The list is very long. I don't have a lot of slots left, but there are a few.
Hydrate up, bitch.
I will, I will. Yeah, thank you for the hat pad. Thank you. It's, is it the infinite hat pad or is it the normal? It's the infinite hat pad. Give me a second. Okay. Sometimes it, we got, we get the infinite hat pad and sometimes we get a normal hat pad. Yeah. I guess it's, it's on the list and you're like, I, I like all of them on the list. The ones I do not like, I just did not put on the list yesterday. Yeah. I got so many crumbs on my desk. I should probably stop eating at my desk. But where else do I eat? Oh shit. I got a cappuccino. I should be getting more awake. It was not in it. There were a few more, like, like I said, the jail one, the glass jar. The glass jar, we did not add that because once the study streams are over, it doesn't make any sense. So those are the ones that, that, um... That are not here and not on the list. Takes time for the caffeine to circu- I'm, I'm, I don't know why, but caffeine makes me tired. Get a link and check out raid video for it. Yeah, go, go, go! Of course, if, if, if you need a break or you have anything else to do, you don't have to stay. And I appreciate your raid very much. But do not force yourself to stay. Take, take a break. Um, yeah. I mean, BT boys put themselves in jars. I mean, how else am I gonna study? Mmm! Mmm! You're looking, ah, no, stop, 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 stop. Nah, it's you, you... You are the cutest little Dante I know, okay? You're so cute, so cute! I hate those jars though. Why? Because you have to, you have to clean them? Put Choco, Choco in a bug jar. Oh! You do not dare to put me in a jar with bugs. Who do I need to put that, what? What? Uh, did I say, guys, don't forget to drink something? We're gonna say hydrated over here? Because only if we hydrate, our brains work. I mean, mine doesn't work anyway, but at least we can make yours work. Yeah. But I think we should, we should slowly go over to... Um, our little game. Look, I'm, I changed, I changed my little spirit. We got the birdie now. Isn't it cute? I love it. I s- I love it so much. I create his ki- wait, what? I did not rea- what? I did action, I use baguette. You can use baguette! Do you have a baguette in your team? Arthur, do you have a baguette in your team? Brain never, brain never works, no. Brain never, brain never works. It's... Just not working. Hi, Harusha, how are you? Welcome in. Hope you're doing good. Not saying, not yet. Still chatting. You missed the emote poll. You missed it. Said yes only engine nine, breed dog. The bred, bred dog. We g- we're gonna get a new emote. We're gonna get a new emote. Oh, wait, we got, what's going on? We got a new emote and we're gonna get the Soul Left the Body emote. Yeah. Yeah, that, that, that was the, the, the decision of the chat. Or did the disgusted, the disgusted got also a vote? There were like, like, four... Wait, we got, we got disgusted, riot, lurky and soul left the body. And lurky didn't get a vote. I mean, disgusted is not bad. No mafia, no mafia, no. No mafia. No mafia, maybe in the future. Maybe. It is useful, the rest, I mean, they're all useful. They're all very useful. Yeah. I might do the, the disgusted and the riot myself. Gonna have to check that. Lucent, I think. Lucent got the first redeem. It was a pretty tight battle. There were like three people battling for it. Riot with a sign. I don't know yet, I don't know yet. I didn't see the... How dare you miss my notification? How dare you? Are you not, like, I, I, don't get me wrong, I'm, I'm not mad. Just disappointed. Just disappointed. Yeah. But there was a notification. It, it was there, I saw it. It pops up on my computer as well. Drama is, uh, is very important. It's very important. Without drama, it's just boring. I'm gonna put you guys on the small screen now. And we can talk about... Oh, we did that, by the way! We did that. We chose the new emote. I have to check my emails, like always, and then we're gonna write two pages. Maybe more, I don't know, we will see. And then I have to find an email to some, some, so I can interview someone, because the other two people I wanted to interview did not answer. I just see an empty GPO for 600 euros and I can't like... I have no idea what that is, but I know it's for the computer. I know it's for the computer, so... I wish you luck. Begin Eep. Hope I can get you. We will see, Harusha. Good night, good night. I will see you... Well, latest, I will see you tomorrow, maybe even today. Who knows? Who knows? Okay, that's it to-do list for today, guys. And I, I'm so proud that we already did one, so... We did not waste time. We did actually something. Yeah. Mm-hmm. Yeah. Ah, my nose, I hate it. Terrible! Oh, I need to find... I need to add a new one. Um... I have to check for emote examples to send to the artist. So, yeah. Lo- li- list is long enough to scroll. Terrible, just terrible. Currency piece, I go for 100 plus and they should be 700. 1000 pla- ah, okay. Well, that seems mean and unfair, but that's how business works. Capitalism, you know? Capitalism! Ooh, by the way, guys, about the, the Shrek movie. Hi, Shrimpy, welcome in, how are you? About the Shrek movie? Listen. They, they, they moved the release date probably because they got bullied enough to get a new design. Like, the new design was so bad, they were bullied and now they have to go back to the old design. But the thing I wanna talk about is, you can see his daughter, but his daughter has brown eyes in the trailer. He has three kids, two boys and one girl. The girl has blue eyes. So he has a, he has now two daughters because one of his sons transitioned and is now a girl. That's the, that's the most common theory about it and I love it. It's, I love it, it's just so fun. It's nice. Hope and breath, I close, um, his... I have no idea what, um, MSR, PR and MAD are, I don't know. So like, yeah, like the Sonic movie, where they were bullied as well. I'm doing alrighty. Stream, I'm doing okay. I didn't like the realistic social media, but... I think that was kinda funny. I think that was kinda funny, but I did not like the, where Fiona comes and it's like, ooh, mommy likey. What the fuck is that? That's disgusting. Nobody talks like that. Who talks like, no, no. That was, no. I did not like that. I wish to serve the Sonic they wanted to use was Sonic beaten by- It was deserved, I saw it, I was like, excuse me, they should bully the Minecraft movie too. Because what the fuck is going on? The Minecraft movie looks eh, and I don't even play Minecraft, but I know that's not what Minecraft looks like. AMD brand, MSR, manufacturer suggested retail price. Oh! Okay. Again, I do understand that. Not even, you just re- Arusha, go to bed, go sleep! I'm still having. Yeah, because I forgot to change the title, I'm sorry. Wondering if the people working on those movies have ever even seen touch the media. I don't know. Yes, me. Good night, Arusha. I don't know, Arthur, I don't know, but it's, you have that with a lot of things. Where you're like, watching it and... It's just chalk, shocking. There were, like, quite interesting to see someone interested in AMD TPs. Yeah, it's, it's very interesting because that is, that is very rare, right? Riot? It's, it's, isn't it? I mean, about the movie thing, there's a lot of those things where I'm like, you just have to read the books and you see the movie is like, uh, what the fuck's going on? Thank you for the lucky Shrimpy. You know what I mean? The best example is... I don't know what name it is in English, but Ruby Red, like, I, I need to Google the name of it in English. I don't even know if it's in. Oh, it's called Ruby Red. It's, it's, and I read the books, I stopped reading the books because it was just terrible, but the movie was like nothing like the books, so I enjoyed the movies pretty much. I was gonna go Nvidia. Take on AI being the fu- Eo, AI never the future, never. Unless? Unless AI is doing my household? Then, then it's the future. It seems to be the best you can get from Nvidia, ah, okay, mm-hmm. Pretty thing where the producers told the staff they weren't allowed to look at. Really? Oh shit. I've heard that Bridgerton is also not like the books, but I don't know, I never read the books, I just watched the show. 50 series, I never anything missing only. Good to know. AI upscaling season. Yeah, the second someone is not, something is not getting produced anymore, it's skyrocketing in price, it's insane. I just want, I just want Mario Party, Mario Party 3 for my N64. You cannot not find it, and you cannot find it for a nice price. You know? Terrible. My neighbors are loud again, can you hear that? Can you guys hear that? So someone could just last at least five more years. Can you find it? Yeah, I'm gonna let you guys talk about whatever that is. I have no idea, I know my computer is running, that's all I know and all I need to know. This looks a weird to me, if something is made anymore doesn't that usually mean there's something bad on? Yeah, that's true, but there are collectors out there. Air collectors out there. Also, I want the game, and the people know I want the game. So... As long as there are people who are buying it, I can make it as more ex- as expensive as possible. Yeah, they're talking about the computer stuff, that's all I need to know. I don't know, I don't need to know more. It's all I need to know, they're talking about the computer stuff. Meanwhile, I'm over here got my computer already ready built in the mail. Supposed to be, but it was the same price for, burn it almost like. Was burning? That's not good. That's not good. That, because I know, I know some things about elech- uh, electronic goods, and one of those things I know, it's not supposed to burn. It's not supposed to light up and fire. Oh wow! The burning cables and missing compo- That's another thing I, I know, you, you're not supposed to miss components. Melt the connect, oh shit, what the fuck? What the? What is going on, huh? Got some bad quality. Yeah, I saw a YouTube short yesterday talking about how this giant sun turn some movies literally blew up several. Wow! I'm still waiting for my computer to blow up when I loo- use, uh, Live2D. Scary, it's pretty serious, it's basically very good, uh. Yes, exactly, exactly what Lucen is saying. Your wifi is not working, Tauro. That's not good. That's not good, that's not good! Pretty serious good price, too high for me. Yeah, exactly, mm-hmm, I, I would say, I, I say that too, it's, it's... Too ex- expensive, mm-hmm. Yeah. Mm-hmm. Exactly what I were gonna say. Specs we needed for the wild again. Probably very good, very good specs. They just, but I, that's just me talking, um, like an expert, you know, I know all my electronics stuff. I know all of that. I can use imperfections totally for, prices are not the best. When are they ever, when are the prices any, e- 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 ever the best, like? It's, everything is so expensive, it's just so expensive to live right now. And yes, you need a graphics card to live, I, I decided that. Arthur, you're, you're speaking my mind, you're speaking my mind. Yes. That is why I want to go and give their prices not scary as well, I think. I'm gonna let you guys keep talking, guys, don't forget to drink something. I'm gonna go study now. So I will see you in, in 25 minutes, and, and you can discuss, um, you can go and discuss the computer thingies, because I don't know what you're talking about. I will see you 25 minutes, guys. Break time. What did I miss? Probably a lot. There's the line, okay. I found the line. I found the line! That's a lot of words I do not understand. Yeah, you're correct. It's a lot of tech talk. A lot of tech talk. Me too. Don't worry, I got lost almost immediately. Almost immediately.
Hydrate up, bitch.
I will hydrate, yes. Don't worry. I cannot afford it anyway. I can't afford it anyway, so... Can you believe that I have to read a guide on how to prevent mold in your apartment? For my bachelor thesis? I have to read how to prevent mold? And how to spot if you already have mold? It is boring. It is. It is very boring, but it has to be done. It has to be done. So, yeah. Not happy about it. Not really happy about it. But I'm gonna put on my good music, some Mario Kart Coconut Mall. In hopes I might... Um... It might help me. Yeah, there it is. A little bit quieter. Set bugs feed on mold, I believe, probably, probably. But, yeah. I have no idea. And it's alre- it is... Or is it only, I don't know, I have no idea. I, I do not know anything about bugs. I am, and we're gonna be productive tomorrow as well! And then we're gonna have a day off, and you can go to Piggasessi, she's probably streaming tomorrow, not tomorrow, uh, on Friday. And then on Saturday, we're gonna be back with a game. Sunday, we're gonna go back to study. Yeah. I have to go back to study now. Very productive. No thank you. No thank you. Okay, I'm gonna go back to study, so I will see you soon!
Break time, what did I miss? Okay, see you soon. Look, you're probably not here anymore. But see you soon, Lucen. And see you soon, Tauro. I'm gonna need to know what you're gonna eat. By the way, guys. My music right now... Yeah. Um... But it works. It works. We are close to half a page. And I can probably get a little bit more out of this source I'm having here right now. And I got another source I can also use for this. Yeah. So I think one page will be kinda easy. Um... But after that, we will see. We will see. Could be not two pages, but I'm gonna try my best. Gonna try my best to get two pages done. I'm getting... Oh shit, I'm getting a headache right now. You know what? I'll go to the desk. Gonna go to the desk. Gonna go to the desk, maybe that helps. Maybe that helps. Who knows? Also, I need to drink something to make this headache go away. Yeah. Ooh, by the way, you guys doing your to-do list as well? Just asking, are you also very productive or is it just me who is productive? Kinda. What you doing? What you doing? Jim is productive, yes. Jim is very productive. Writing DJ's info for some art I want to... Ooh, that's productive. That's also productive. I need to... I'm gonna, maybe before I go to bed, I'm gonna take off my nails. Kinda annoying me, they are too long to tie. It's too long to tie. Oh, hi baby! Hi! Yeah, yeah. Uh-uh. Fräulein? Hey! What's that? Come here. Everybody is productive, yay! Nah-uh! Mmm, manju. Oh, such a sweet baby, oh! Oh! Guys, don't forget to drink something, that's important. But I will be back to study. So we can hopefully soon finish half a page. So see you in 25 minutes! Break time! Break time! Also, did you guys see what I did? And we're pretty close to this one as well. Today is a good day, today we're doing good! Also, Manju came and sat on my lap right now, she's sleeping. She's like, hmm... Hmm... Aw... She's so cute. Progress? Yes, we did, we made some progress! And Hi-Toto, welcome back! What did you eat? What did you have for dinner? Tell me! Tell me! Yeah, today is very productive! I'm really happy, maybe we can add another half-page later, who knows? I mean, look, we have four things already covered, and now the last four. That's amazing! That is pretty cool! I ate salmon, ooh! Nice. Just salmon or did you eat it with something else? I just saw a video of a container ship on the ocean, and it's... It's leaning pretty strong, it's... I'm getting seasick just watching that video. And yes, I am on Twitter right now! It's break time, I'm allowed to be on Twitter. I am allowed to be. What do you eat? I will eat leftovers from yesterday. The cheese and leek soup, with not a lot of leek, because the leek went bad, so I had to throw away half of it. I'm gonna eat the leftovers of that. Oh no, what? Oh no! Oh no what? That's sad? About the leek, yeah, I was really sad, because I was cutting it and noticing there are dark spots in there, and I was like, "Is that dirt?" No, that's not dirt. I thought it was dirt at first, I was like, "Yeah, we just clean it" properly once I have cut it, but it's not dirt. It was not dirt. But you know what? That's alright. It still tastes good. Very good. Very good. But I think in the next study session, um... we will most definitely finish this one page. I am very sure of it. Ah, it's already study session again. We'll see you guys in 25 minutes. I hope you're productive as well.
Break time? I am... And guys... Did you see that? Did you see that? Did you see that? We got one page in! And... I already started the next one. I already started the next one. That's amazing! I'm so productive right now, I cannot even... Understand why, how, when did that happen? When did it happen that my productivity went up like this? Wow! That's amazing! That's amazing! Depending on how the next study session goes, we might be able to... To finish off both of those. But, no promises? Of course, no promises. Yeah, I'm locked in. I don't know how I'm doing this, but... It's working! It is working! I tell you guys, it's the coconut mall. Um... From... From Mario Kart. It's, it's, it's just crack. It's just like crack. That, that, that is the only way... I can imagine. Like... Make it make sense. Make it make sense. But I have to say, the chapter I'm writing on right now, does not need a lot of sources. And that helps a lot. It does not need a lot of sources. It needs a lot of my, my ideas, right now. Because I'm currently describing how to... Make something... Better, in my opinion, and my opinion does not need sources because it is my opinion. So yeah... Gonna be very interesting how that turns out in the end. But, it's also gonna be the longest chapter yet. Cause, um, this chapter, we are already on page 4. And I'm pretty sure I do not have... I do not have, um... What is this? I'm pretty sure I do not have any chapters with 4 pages. Let me check real quick. Ooh, we got, we got one with 3 and a half pages! But yeah, this one will be longer. This one will be way longer. Well, not way longer, but it will be longer. Hmm... So yeah... Kinda proud of myself right now, that's just amazing what I'm doing right now. And this, like I said, this chapter is... One of the easiest so far. It's just one of the easiest. Also, I could also, I could not add, I could add even more pictures. Right now, in this chapter, because it's, it's a... It's a chapter that could be used for a lot of pictures, I might... I might add another one, but... Nah... Not in this one right now. Yeah, I cannot use, no, I cannot use that. But yeah, it's, it's pretty amazing, I think I'm done with this source. What else do I need? Pretty sure I'm not done with this part yet. This chapter has a few parts. Uh, it has, I think, 4 parts in general. This is one chapter. Are we in break time, or are we in study session? Oh, we're in... I thought we were still in, in break time? Huh? We're already over? But yeah, I'm gonna go back to study. I didn't even notice break time was over, I was just talking. I will see you guys in 20 minutes! Wait, I skipped break time? I skip, wait, what? Oh shit, I was, I was, yeah, I was really locked in. Wow! Wow! Break time, I am... And guys... Did you see that? Did you see that? Did you see that? We got one page in! And... I already started the next one. I already started the next one. That's amazing! I'm so productive right now, I cannot even... Understand why, how, when did that happen? When did it happen that my productivity went up like this? Wow! That's amazing! That's amazing! Depending on how the next study session goes, we might be able to, to finish off both of those. But, no promises? Of course, no promises. Yeah, I'm locked in. I don't know how I'm doing this, but... It's working! It is working! I tell you guys, it's the coconut mall. Um... From... From Mario Kart. It's, it's, it's just crack. It's just like crack. That, that, that is the only way... I can imagine. Like... Make it make sense. Make it make sense. But I have to say, the chapter I'm writing on right now, does not need a lot of sources. And that helps a lot, it does not need a lot of sources. It needs a lot of my, my ideas, right now. Because I'm currently describing how to... Make something... Better, in my opinion, and my opinion does not need sources because it is my opinion. So yeah... Gonna be very interesting how that turns out in the end. But, it's also gonna be the longest chapter yet. Cause, um, this chapter, we are already on page 4. And I'm pretty sure I do not have... I do not have, um... What is this? I'm pretty sure I do not have any chapters with 4 pages. Let me check real quick. Ooh, we got, we got one with 3 and a half pages! But yeah, this one will be longer. This one will be way longer. Well, not way longer, but it will be longer. Hmm... So yeah... Kinda proud of myself right now, that's just amazing what I'm doing right now. And this, like I said, this chapter is... One of the easiest so far. It's just one of the easiest. Also, I could also, I could not add, I could add even more pictures. Right now, in this chapter, because it's, it's a... It's a chapter that could be used for a lot of pictures, I might... I might add another one, but... Nah... Not in this one right now. Yeah, I cannot use, no, I cannot use that. But yeah, it's, it's pretty amazing, I think I'm done with this source. What else do I need? Pretty sure I'm not done with this part yet. This chapter has a few parts. Uh, it has, I think, 4 parts in general. This is one chapter. Are we in break time, or are we in study session? Oh, we're in... I thought we were still in, in break time? Huh? We're already over? But yeah, I'm gonna go back to study. I didn't even notice break time was over, I was just talking. I will see you guys in 20 minutes! Wait, I skipped break time? I skip, wait, what? Oh shit, I was, I was, yeah, I was really locked in. Wow! Wow! But I have to say, the chapter I'm writing on right now does not need a lot of sources. And that helps a lot. It does not need a lot of sources. It needs a lot of my, my ideas, right now. Because I'm currently describing how to make something... Better, in my opinion, and my opinion does not need sources because it is my opinion. So yeah... Gonna be very interesting how that turns out in the end. But it's also gonna be the longest chapter yet. Cause, um, this chapter, we are already on page 4. And I'm pretty sure I do not have... I do not have, um... What is this? I'm pretty sure I do not have any chapters with 4 pages. Let me check real quick. Ooh, we got, we got one with 3 and a half pages! But yeah, this one will be longer. This one will be way longer. Well, not way longer, but it will be longer. Hmm... So yeah... Kinda proud of myself right now, that's just amazing what I'm doing right now. And this, like I said, this chapter is one of the easiest so far. It's just one of the easiest. Also, I could also, I could not add, I could add even more pictures. Right now, in this chapter, because it's, it's a... It's a chapter that could be used for a lot of pictures. I might... I might add another one, but nah... Not in this one right now. Yeah, I cannot use, no, I cannot use that. But yeah, it's, it's pretty amazing. I think I'm done with this source. What else do I need? Pretty sure I'm not done with this part yet. This chapter has a few parts. Uh, it has, I think, 4 parts in general. This is one chapter. Are we in break time, or are we in study session? Oh, we're in... I thought we were still in, in break time? Huh? We're already over? But yeah, I'm gonna go back to study. I didn't even notice break time was over, I was just talking. I will see you guys in 20 minutes! This time. This time I noticed. This time I noticed. I noticed. Gonna put you guys on a big screen real quick. I noticed it's break time! Uh, how did I miss break time last? I mean, yeah, I was locked in, but... I was locked in that much? Like, huh? But yeah, we, we still cannot cross off this one. Almost. Almost. Still some, some space left to have half a page. Should've... I couldn't, I don't know why, but I could not lock in again. I locked out. When the study session began, and I started having a break, and then I was... I, I was locked out. But yeah, we're gonna do a dinner break? We're gonna do a dinner break? And I will put something on for you while I... Uh, reheat my leftovers. So yeah, let me do that really quick. Um... Hmm... You're okay, baby? I think I'm gonna put that on for you guys. Um... How do I turn it off? I don't want it! Stop the audio track! Okay. I hate that. Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna reheat my dinner. Is any mod here right now? I'm on my own. Oh shit, I'm on my own! I'm on my own. So I'm gonna leave you guys... For a few minutes. Please behave. Please behave, there is no mod around right now. I will see you in, I don't know, 5 minutes, 10 minutes, however long it takes for me to make dinner.
Remember that tofu has a lot of water, so if you want to fry it with oil, you have to soak some of the water out... In the surface, otherwise, you're gonna hurt yourself, because it's gonna be splashed everywhere. in the surface, otherwise, you're gonna hurt yourself, because it's gonna be splashed everywhere with the oil. Be quite generous with the amount of oil you put in here. The more you put it in, the crispier the tofu is. If my mom is here and she sees the amount of oil I'm using, she's gonna smack me. Because, she's gonna say that I'm wasteful. Here's a cooking tip for you. If you have like a non-stick pan, do not use metal to touch it. I'm using it because I have no other option, but I'm being very careful, so that I don't scratch the non-stick... thingy thing. Make sure that the sign here is also getting fried, and it's also a bit yellow. While waiting for the tofu to be fried, we can move on to work on the meat now. Here is the pork. We just need a little bit of it, not all of it, I think. So for the filling, you can go simple by just having pork and shallot, but you can also go hard for it by having some mushroom, uh, coriander, green onion, and a bit of the, you know, onion, but it's still green like this. My mom insists that I have to tell people that, because it's gonna make a very good dish. Now we have the filling, and for our very beautiful and thick tofu, we just need to put the filling inside the tofu now, and then we can move on to the next step. I think I definitely have to cut it into a half now, because it's basically too big for doing anything. You're going to make a hole here, and use a spoon, and move all of the tofu inside out. Take the tofu out like this, so that you give some space for the meat here. This is why you have to fry it before, so that it's, the outside is strong enough, otherwise, it's gonna break super easy. Now you have a hole in here, you can stuff the meat inside now. And then use your hand to stuff it. Try not to break the tofu. And that's it! Now you have a beautiful stuffed tofu! I would like to formally apologize for a clickbaiting title, because I don't think this dish will be finished in 15 minutes. But it's still a very quick and easy dish, you guys. Probably in 25 minutes, in total, we can finish it. All we need to do is fry them again. Put the meat part directly facing with the pan, so that you can fry directly with the meat for like 2-3 minutes. Now that we are waiting for the tofu, we can prepare the sauce. First of all, we need some dry shallot, drop a tomato, 1 is enough, I think. It's a little bit burnt up here, but I think it's still good. Now we're going to use the same pan with the same oil that we are using from the beginning to fry the shallot. And after the shallot is yellow, we put tomato in there. Season it with salt, and pepper if you like pepper. And MSG if you have it. And fish sauce! Always add fish sauce to everything! Now gently, put the tofu inside, and cook it for around 5 more minutes. And you're done! It is definitely not the 15 minutes, I am so sorry! But we're done now, yay! Just take the tofu out and then put the sauce on it, and then you can eat it.
Okay, it looks like you guys, um, started a riot? Okay, okay. What did I miss? There's a lot, a lot, lot of, um, um... Chaos, riot, uh, going on. I'm gonna eat real quick! How long did it take to reheat the food? 6 minutes, okay. I will see, uh, I will, I will just eat, and you guys, I'm, I'm watching you, I'm watching you. I'm watching you. I could say you're spamming off. She started a riot because no mod was around! Where, where were my mods?
This is where my mom store the eggs. Um, this is our homemade eggs, because we do have chicken at home, and everybody in the village has chicken. So basically, they just came and gave my mom a lot of eggs too, and that's why we have that many. I think 3 is enough, yeah. If you have a rice cooker, when you cook rice, just put it in there, and then it's gonna get cooked with the rice too. Otherwise, you can steam it with a steamer, or you can kind of boil it, and it's very easy. First of all, get some water. Then you put this inside, that's it! Now you just boil it until everything is solid and cooked, and then you can eat it.
Checking now if your mouse was sent twice.
I think it's ready. Let me try it first.
Author's bending the rules.
Now I'm going to show you how I make my favorite fish soup in the world. It's called Gang Chua Ga, and, um, there is some ingredients that might be hard to fry for you guys, but I'm gonna simplify it down to a version that almost everybody can make, everywhere in the world, okay? First, you need a piece of fish. Almost every fish work, if you can also use salmon if you want. Um, but I would prefer to have fish that is fresh, and has the bones still intact and everything. I'm just gonna use 1 piece of fish, that's it now. First, to make sure the fish won't be smelling fishy, we will just fry it quickly. When it comes to making sweets for many Vietnamese dishes, we mostly use pineapple, especially when you use soup. We just put some piece of pineapple. Kind of very special treat, but it's not sugar, but it's not artificial, and it smells so good as well. The fish is fried, not completely, but it's fried like this. And you're gonna use the same pan with the same oil to fry shallot and onion together now. Now add some tomato. I know, this is like the only base of almost 50% of Vietnamese dishes. But believe me, after you cook them, it doesn't taste the same, because the other ingredients will change everything.
Oh, also guys, don't forget to drink something!
Into a pot, because this is a soup, not a stir-fry dish, and add a lot of water in. Now you're going to season it with salt and fish sauce. Now we're going to wait for around 10 to 15 minutes, so that the fish will be thoroughly cooked. This dish will have 3 different flavors: salty, sweet, and sour. We have the sweet from pineapple, and sour, you guys have to, um, be creative with that. Think of a food ingredient in your culture that make your food sour. Not lemon, because when you cook lemon in high degree, it's not soury anymore, okay? For example, in my country, you could use tamarind also. I could put a picture and also the English word here, and when you cook that, it's still getting sour even after you cook. So if you guys have tamarind in your country, use it and put something in here. If you don't have some, just add some vinegar, I guess, but it's not gonna taste that good. So for the vegetable part, there is 3 main ingredient: alka, zatmung, I think in English they call it mint, but I will fix it on the video. And sprout bean. If you're from a western country, I would say alka is quite easy to get. Just go to any Turkish supermarket, they sell it a lot over there. This thingy, I think it's pretty hard to get unless you go to work.
I got double the entertainment right now. I got YouTube arguing in chat as entertainment, and I have the video as entertainment.
Anyway, here I have some mint, and we have to peel it, because the outer part is toxic, and it make you feel icky. So you have to take care of it first.
That's not reasonable. I rule... I rule, I as the judge. Rule, it, it, it's alright. Don't worry about it, it's alright. You made a joke, it's not really... Usually it would be called spamming, but it's on, on a joke, so I think that's fine. That's my ruling over this. But author is, uh, not, Toto is also correct. So you're both kinda alrighty. I don't know how to explain it, in this case, it's alrighty. But like, without context and just spamming, that would be, hmm, not okay. But right now, it was like, kind of a little, a little riot? Yeah, you're both guilty.
I'm pretty sure you guys could find it in many places in the world. If you don't have it, you can replace it with vegetable of your choice, or corabi, or those green melon, it's also gonna work as well. Now we have to peel it, chop it into small pieces, and cook it with the shrimp. Let's go!
I'm almost losing as long as I drag someone.
This is the shrimp soup. The trick is that you should not cook the veggies too fast or too long. Like for this kind of veggie, you just put it in, wait for like 5 seconds, and you turn it off, otherwise, it's gonna get super, super soft. I will also try the fish soup as well. God, it has such interesting taste! I don't know what got over me today. Everything I or my mom cook is really, really good. I mean, my mom cook very good, it's not a surprise, but everything I cook is also really, really good. 10 out of 10. When it comes to eating vegetable, I think I mentioned several times that we basically just boil it, or we try to just eat it raw. But we also really like to stir-fry it with garlic, just garlic. And I think one of the most popular stir-fry vegetable in Vietnam has to be morning glory garlic stir-fry. When you come here as a tourist, you will see it almost everywhere. Mostly, you have to make sure that you don't overcook it, so that it's still crunchy. I think it's almost done now. You cook with for 10 second more, and then you can finish it. Before you finish cooking, crush some more garlic and put it in there, and cook it for around 5 to 10 seconds. Because all of the garlic we used at the beginning is already overcooked, and now they don't smell like garlic anymore. So you always put some fresh garlic in at the end, so that it tastes like garlic again. And basically, that's it! Mix it for 5 more seconds, and then we're done! I'm telling you, I am addicted to this dish, and when I moved to Germany, I just miss it so much. I mean, I still fry a lot of vegetable over there, but nothing is like morning glory, because it's super crunchy. But for you guys, don't be worried, use spinach, use bug joint, use any veggie that you could fry that is green. It's so good. Normally, we eat them with rice, like everything else. And I just love, love, love the garlic smell, and it just goes so well with this kind of vegetable. One of my absolute favorite seafood is squid. I love squid. I can eat squid every week. Normally, I only steam squid with lemongrass, but you can also make a very, very yummy squid dish with celery. This is Vietnamese celery, so it's a little bit smaller, but you guys can just buy the celery in the supermarkets in western country. It's super thick, it tastes kind of the same. This one is a little bit more intense. Squid and celery is the perfect combination, and normally, you just need to stir-fry them together. Let me show you how. Normally, in Vietnamese cooking, we don't really use onion that often, but in this dish, we do use onion, this western onion, like half of it. The reason why we're using it is because onion goes very well with celery. You have to keep stirring until the squid is completely cooked, because once you put the celery in there, you're just gonna fry it for 10-15 minutes. Because we want it to be crunchy, okay?
Okay. I think we're gonna finish the video. And then we're gonna go back to studying.
I wish I could add a bit more celery in here. I only see squid right now. This is the perfect combination. Remember to put pepper in here.
Yeah, it was a short break, but I'm done eating. I, I ate kinda quick. So, yeah. Once in a lifetime, I can be serious, okay? Okay. I can be serious once in a while. Liar. What do you mean liar? Look, I wanna, wanna get done, I wanna get this done. Wanna get it done? 2 pages, and then... In my case, it's time to go almost far. No! Don't go, author! No! Stay! Stay! Yeah, goodnight, author. We will see you tomorrow. We'll see you tomorrow. Bye bye, goodnight! Just, he's, he, he just left. He just left us. So sad. But yeah, I'm gonna go back to study. Um... Because like I said, I'm gonna finish. Is that your goodbye message, author? Final chaos. I will see you tomorrow, author. I, I'm gonna see you tomorrow. But yeah, I'm gonna go back to study. And let's go!
Break time. See you soon, Tauro. See you soon. We finished another half-page? And we're pretty close... Oh, there was the wrong document. We're really close to... Finishing the second page as well. Which would be pretty cool. I'm just looking for sources right now. Which is kinda difficult. So I'm not even sure... If we can finish... This page in the next... In the next study session, but I hope we do, I really hope we do. Manju! Manju is really loud right now. She's asking for attention, but I cannot give her the attention right now. I just can't. I'm busy. Very busy. Magical? But she also doesn't want to sit on my lap anymore, and I'm like... Yeah, but that's the only possible... Thing right now. You know? You know? Yeah. Hmm, Manju. Sometimes the breaks feel longer than they are. It feels like I've been in break for like 10 minutes already, but it's none. It's none. Yeah, come on? Manju. But she does also, she doesn't want to go on my lap. She doesn't want to get on my lap, Manju. Come here! You have to talk to me, Manju. I'm gonna go back to studying. I'll see you soon, 25 minutes.
By the way... Yeah, my brain is melting. We finished 2 pages, which is not bad. It's actually pretty good. That's amazing. I need to finish 2 pages tomorrow as well and I am back on track. Well, not really. I'm still 1 week behind. Or 2. I might be even 3 weeks behind. Oh shit. Well... Promise me. Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Arusa. Alright, now can finally close the stupid game. Can close that? So how did you sleep? How did you sleep, Arusa? Hope you had a good night. How are you doing? Did you sleep well? What are you eating for breakfast? Or for... It's not breaking fast. It's not breaking the fasting stuff. It's something... I forgot. I'm closing my... I bet. I bet. Did you sleep good? Did you have a good night's sleep? Pretty fast meal. Yeah, that's what I was looking for. Does it have a special name? Probably. Oh, I forgot to give you your background music back, guys. Su- Suhur? 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 I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing it correctly, but I'm probably not pronouncing it correctly. But yeah, what are you eating for Suhur? For? Close enough. What are you eating? Oh, it's good. I know that you have to break your fast, you eat a date. An uneven amount of dates. Yeah, that's what I know what you guys eat. I should maybe some chicken wings. Ooh, chicken wings is good. I do enjoy some chicken wings from time to time, yeah. Also, I still think it's kind of funny that we... Then you'll finally be able to come to my raids just because of Ramadan? Yeah, I think it's kind of funny. And did you have... Did you dream about me? Did you dream about me? Probably not. Well... Thanks. Got to make me journey. I should be your god. I should... No, just kidding, just kidding. But yeah. Thanks god to get you here. But yeah, today we don't... We are not gonna do the same as yesterday. We're gonna, um... Gonna raid real quick. But we can still talk a bit if you want. We can still talk a bit. Also, I got some gummy worms. I need my midnight... It's not midnight, but I need my midnight snack. Mm-hmm. Hmm, it's good. It's so good. Yes. Yes, you should dream about me. You should dream about me. Just me. Because I'm the most important VTuber. Mm-hmm. I could catch you. Don't worry, you won't get tortured. You won't get tortured. Yeah. Yeah, you're getting a small little concert, by the way. I'm annoying myself with this. Why am I doing this to you guys? I'm so sorry. Give me some fill... No, thank you. Oh, my back hurts. Oh shit. Oh, that's not good. Okay, so we're gonna raid someone who has a cat on the table right now. Just saying. Just saying. Just saying there's a cat on the table. You know the rules? You know the, you know the rules? Be nice. Say hello. Leave a follow. And, and, and look at the small little kitty. Um... Yeah. Be, just, can redeem channel save as well. I will stretch as soon as we raid, I promise. But yeah, I will see you guys tomorrow. Bye bye!